Roll call please.
Brown.
Here. Thank you, ma'am.
Hendrickson?
Here.
Joe Saylor?
Here.
No?
Here.
Can I have a call on?
Even with smashing my bug.
Carmen or Slum? Please.
Dear God, we gather here today in your presence to conduct the business of the town. We ask for your blessing and guidance and help to support the town in the best manner possible. And we would very sincerely call on you.
Thank you. We do an approval of the agenda. Any questions, concerns about tonight's information we'll discuss? Brad, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Minutes October 8, 2024. Questions, concerns? Motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Tim and Debbie, roll call vote please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Joe Decker?
I abstain.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Richard Taylor?
Yes.
Pass five to zero.
Bachelor packets November 2024.
Thanks.
We are recording, okay?
I didn't have any questions.
Questions, concerns at all?
I'm open to that question.
Yes, sir.
I did. So I did have one I wanted to ask. So like as I was flipping through it, just like one that came up was like out of the water operating fund. I see that there's, you know, incidents of like streetlights. And so are we, is that? We're, it seems like we're all kind of transitioning to define. And so like, that's one of the things that we're looking to eliminate, I think, right? Like not coming out of the water operating fund, but more being attributed to the department in which the expense comes, right?
Yeah, so the main things for the utility records for next year that we focus on was E D U and the bond fund. But if where we could see the block comes, you hit it right directly ahead. So streetlights next year will come out of E D U. There still will be some, some things coming out of water sewer and storms that don't quite make sense yet. Because again, we focus on ensuring legal and financial for our focus for the utility margins and moving those where they need to be paid from. And the streetlights will all come out of E D U for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any concerns? Brad?
Thank you.
Joe, Debbie, Tim?
No, sir.
I'll move to approve. Okay.
Phil and Brad, vote please. Roll call.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Joe Decker?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Pass five.
Old Business Ordinance 2024.
No. Financial reports?
Oh, financial report. Yep. Number wrong. Apologize for that.
Um, so you can see the general fund balance, um, fund balance is $175,000, 183.28. I know I read that wrong, I'm silly, but revenue $91,043.07. Dispersed $171,000, $175,000. Water operating, the fund balance is $661,785.28. Revenue, two dispersments, $664,664.07. And dispersed $104,583.06. Sewer improvement, fund balance, again, we see it as high, um, over $1.2 million because this has to be a project in here for their, as they have credits, as they hold that permit. Revenue was $37,700. You'll see a disbursement of $206,500.80. This is for some of the expenditures with the interstate lift station that's underway. Um, some of this will be reimbursed through the ready funds if you remember, we received a ready grant for a portion of this project. So it's like a little bit higher for dispersments. Uh, water operating, fund balance is $331,000.28. Revenue $164,052.50 and dispersed $134,853.20. And then on our water improvement, our fund balance is $530,246.96. And our revenue just under $20,000 at $19,370.
Did water have an unexpected expense?
Oh, um, with the $134, it's pretty much on target for the last month before the water operating. $134,000.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I can answer that, yes. Any American Water bill has gone up about $15,000.
Did it start?
And it's, it's since the summer. So the water, water operating, we can just be hit until we discuss the water rates, so.
The bills have been running about $55,000 a month.
Then what is done a month, so it's entirely usage of paper, but it's entirely different.
And, um, the interest from the bank for all the bank accounts is that we receive $32,241.47.
Carmen, when did that, um, American Water rate go into effect? Was it like springish, wasn't it? Springtime?
It was like, it really started to feel it because I think July, I have to go back to like a month over month bill.
Do you remember when the settlement was?
I don't. It's in phases. I do remember that. I don't remember exactly when the first phase kicked in.
We have to remember our usage again, when we get bills for the usage, it's about a month behind, so, um, you know. And the way that they bill is like mid-month, mid-month. So it was like us, you know, June 13th, let's just say to July 12th. And so it's, it's not that true, month over month. Um, so it took a little while for us to feel it, but we've been doing it.
Any questions on the financial reports at all? Old Business Ordinance 2024-14.
And then it is a public hearing. I know you guys had asked me, I'll just start with, you would ask us to come back to you with all of your utility rates. Um, and I had taken the sewer project that we were looking at, we're actually looking at kind of a larger project, but trying to break it into phases as soon as possible. And how do we, how do we accomplish the overall large project, but, you know, and how do we best pay for that? Um, when I went back to EDU and asked them to give me some estimates, if I put in five million, 10 million, you know, kind of random amounts, and tell me what those rates would look like, um, unfortunately, they have not, they responded, but said they'll have to charge us more for that. And so I needed to get with Stephen and kind of figure out how to best address it, um, as they're calling it outside of the utility rates. So what we've got tonight for the sewer, um, ordinance 2024-14 is only amending what we charge for the availability fee. So that right now, as we've kind of worked through the process with the, um, the current E D U, why am I forgetting this? 2025?
Yep, yep, 2020.
Is $2,250 and the proposed, oh, it's right there. Uh, the proposed E D U adjustment would go to $3,964 per E D U with the 120 minutes. But this does not affect existing utility accounts, um, unless they go through a remodel or a significant expansion that where they, they're adding more flow to our system. So this is not for our, our current homes, our homeowners. But it would be if, if a project decides to expand where then they're going to add flow to, um, the existing sewer capacity or sewer plant, um, or if it's a new, new build. So, um, we open to answer any questions, um, but then again, it is a public hearing, so. Any questions for me?
I want, now, all this is based on like 350 gallons, right? For the first, for the homeowners, what's existing and stuff like that. So like you said, a remodel or something like that. Is that remodel, if they add more bathrooms, or if they had like a pool house, or something like that, is that how it's gonna affect them?
We haven't dug in that far on residential install, um, but I, I think I know where you're going with that. Let's say they added a structure separate from the home and they put in a bathroom. I would see that as adding to the E D U.
Correct. And so would I, that's why I'm asking.
But I think that's going to be kind of on a case by case, because you're not probably going to see too many of those opportunities here in the town. Um, you know, if, you're, I just don't think you'll see too many of those, but then.
Right. I'm just curious because I know it happens a lot elsewhere too, that they do put in a pool house with a little apartment upstairs, or whatever you want to call it, for in-laws and stuff like that. And that does change the amount they're using. So that was something that I was curious, if they do do that, then that's something they should have to pay. Even though it's an existing, our existing resident, they're adding more to our sewer and everything. So I would assume that we'd automatically charge them for that, if they're adding more bathrooms and stuff. Thank you.
Well, on that, I would say, I don't have it pulled up in front of me. I don't think it's included in full. No, there's other portions of our town code that, that, uh, give it more detail on this. But my recollection is that it was very expressed that residential customers are equal to one E D U. And so if we were wanting to pick up, uh, or be able to charge for something added to a residential customer, probably we'd need to amend our town code.
Yeah.
Generally, the E D U is basically some, it's basically sewer access fee, right?
Correct.
It's basically for them, uh, us to hook them up to our sewer, if the property already has an existing sewer hookup.
I mean, I don't have to pull a permit, but it wouldn't be.
But my, my view of it, and I think that from my discussions with the rate consultant, they would agree, is that it's to pay for the additional capacity in the plant or in the mains, um, that the new customer is going to be taking up. It's not to pay for the physical connection to the system.
No, but I mean, am I incorrect that what triggers it is the physical connection?
Correct. Okay, correct.
Carmen, effective date going forward would be like when, when they like pull a new permit for a project?
Yes.
Is that?
Yeah, media, well, I mean, it's up to you all what you set as the effective date, but I believe that the plan was to have it done now and then come back and visit the actual sewer rates once we have more information.
Yeah, right now, it's drafted that immediately after this takes effect, signed, approved and signed, the next person that comes in and pulls a connection permit for the sewers would have to pay the higher price.
Correct.
So when it's approved by, or voted on council, then it's effective when they pull the permit to, to do their work and so forth?
Right.
To pay that fee.
So, Joe, when you talked, what you were talking about, if someone builds a second story, they've already tapped in, they don't have to tap in again. But if they build a separate entity outside, then there would have to be another tap.
Yeah, basically, as I understand it, what would trigger the additional fee?
Right.
If it was said, say it's one plant.
Is, is if there's a second, basically. If they're not connecting to their own sewer, but they're connecting to ours, then it's going to trigger it.
So I feel like if they add something to their house that already exists on the sewer line.
It's not going to trigger it.
It's not going to trigger it. But if they build a, an outhouse with their pool that has a restroom in it, then that should trigger it.
Depends on how they hook it up.
Yeah, because they can run it.
It's still a tap in though.
Because they can run it into their existing sewer, like Joe says, they could tie right into that. It's still one sewer connection.
But they still have to tap in, where if it's in your house, it's already tapped in.
They can add to their existing.
They can add, like, here's the line, what he's talking is, here's the wastewater line going up to the house now, house. Say he builds a pool house here, but he comes out of this and taps into his line, what's already been there. Now, this is a T Y. A tap is when you tap the main.
Main line. Oh, got, got you.
There you go. That's how that works.
Now, let me just put this into perspective. I mean, you guys can use this as a line. So we have apartments going in. Um, so each of them kind of have criteria that talk about the, the E D U's or, you know, gallons that, that a one-bedroom apartment should have, a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom. So a three-bedroom apartment, so one E D U equals three here to intend out. Um, a three-bedroom apartment, their, their calculation is 350 gallons. So hypothetically, most of the homes, single-family homes in, in White Land are at least a three-bedroom, if not more. So that's up to you if you want to say like, you know, but we're not, we're not going to pick on the, the homeowners to say, well, you have a five-bedroom house.
Yeah, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I know. But if, if a separate structure that's separate from the home wants to, to add something like that, that's where I'm just trying to like, maybe justify why we would order all their E D U for. But technically, a three-bedroom apartment, if they're saying it uses more flow than a three-bedroom house, which.
I would say if they tap the main, if you guys physically gotta go out and tap that main for a second, whether it's a pool house, whether it's this, because it was easier to run that versus going to where he's at, then yeah, I would take an E D U. E D U would be charged because you're physically taking your time to go out, tap the main, and that is considered a tap, and that's an extra.
It's my understanding, that's how this works.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I'm fine with that. I, I don't, I think if we start trying to squeeze on.
No, because you could have four bedrooms in a house and only one bathroom, so.
Right, and I agree with that. I'm just saying if it's a separate.
Tap.
Structure.
Yeah.
And a separate tap, then yes, they should have to pay it. If it's not, then yeah, that's fine to tie into your own line. You're not changing nothing. You're just adding an outside bathroom for your pool. No big deal.
Right.
We need to open this up. Go ahead and open up the public hearing for ordinance 2024-14. Anyone that would like to speak in the public? Sir, if you can come up to the podium, take your name, address.
Counsel?
Hello?
Brian Grasson, 6457 North Park Avenue, Edie Navis. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the developer of the community Stillwater, that is to be developed off of Tracy Road and Robertson Avenue. This community was annexed into the town of White Land over seven years ago. We've never slimmed and carmened quite a bit over the last year or so since we acquired the property, just because we do not have sanitary yet hooked up to our site. And it is to our understanding that hopefully if this is to go into place, that this will help fund some of the sanitary projects you guys have planned and trying to expand and, and build better infrastructure for your community. So I'm here just to help encourage you guys, hopefully, uh, that this will go into place. And I, it's our understanding that it's been a while since you guys have increased your E D U costs and, and for sanitary. So I think it's beneficial for you guys. It'll put more money in your guys' pocket. Hopefully, it'll bring our rooftops to your guys' community and hopefully raise more tax revenue from that front too. So, uh, that's all I have. If you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer, but I'm just here for support.
What was the address again?
My personal address, 457 North Park Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Concerns, questions, anything else?
I think when I built my house 30 years ago, they haven't raised fees since then. Yeah. Yeah. Because I paid 2,500 to tap into water. Yeah.
Questions, concerns over here to my left. Have a motion at all?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-14.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Debbie, Tim with a second. Roll call vote please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Saylor?
Yes.
Yes.
And that would be first reading. Second. I'm sorry. I'm thinking of the water. Excuse me. That's final, right? This is final reading.
Yeah, I believe, I think we introduced it last time, didn't we?
I apologize.
Everybody makes mistakes sometimes.
Not lawyers.
Not Steve. Uh, next item, old business is proper identification logos. This, Carmen?
This was in your packets, um, the last meeting, you all could ask, um, what's your brand of yours, like, and how come? That's you, put together a board of options. I don't.
I like option four.
What color would these be?
It goes on a white vehicle, it would be the black and the gray that you see there. But if it goes on a darker background. Last month, we, I showed what it would look like on a royal blue. It would have that gray with the white, just the, the, they double, they reverse. So it'd be that same concept. Almost all of our vehicles are white, um, with the exception of some of the police, or, excuse me. Fire chiefs, uh, Drango is like a gray.
What would Rick's red be? Oh, that's right.
Mccognito.
Yeah, I know him. I know where he's at.
Can't miss him.
Uh, I, I like option four. Anybody else has any other preferences?
I'm not the person you should ask about aesthetics and taste.
So make a motion.
I make a motion to use option four. For vehicles.
Have a second?
I will.
Brad, you're a decal, decal guy. What do you think?
I'm not a decal guy.
He's a rapper.
Yeah, you're, you're a rapper.
I like that. That looks nice. That looks nice though. That is very nice.
Have a second?
I did.
Oh.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were.
Vote on option four for our logo.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Joe Decker?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Pass five to zero.
So we were talking about the spot in front of me, um, they had said that they need to kind of assess every vehicle. Size would be up to 16 inches by 24 inches depending on the vehicles that they have to measure, um, to see how, if the max they can make.
Thanks for shifting gears, Carmen, and putting that together for us. Appreciate it. Uh, next up is New Business, uh, 2024-13, Water Utility Rates and Charges.
This is just an introduction, uh, to the amendment for water rates, um, and a few other, uh, fees as well. Uh, so at the last council meeting, you guys had asked us to come back with you and put both options one and two in the, um, in the ordinance, but as we kind of worked through the numbers, as well as working through the numbers with three, um, unfortunately, an option two is going to be a significant increase, um, to our resident users. And that you just mentioned 2,000 gallons. And so, um, as we kind of look through the rates and what was being presented, it's, the original proposed was a 19.8% increase across, uh, across the board to everyone. Um, that would be implemented through pre-phases over three years with a 6.6 average increase, which, um, keeping our current rates.
Is this different than the one we got?
From 4,000 gallons, uh, as the minimum, and then moving up. I think we, I could keynote out, um, to people kind of what that would look like. If we implement option two, um, that one was looking at a closer.
Is it saying red?
Well, some would get a rate reduction, obviously, if we went down to the 2,000 minimum, uh, gallons. Um, they would get a rate reduction, but then it could be up to a 77% increase to some packets, um, or some users. And so again, just to keep that, that's, um, as easy as possible and is, I guess I will say fair as possible. It was best to kind of for us to look at the 19.8% increase. As we recall, we have not revised our water rates since 2013. We had a little adjustments here and there as taxes have fallen off and such, but the main rate increase, um, hasn't been done since 2013. So in this includes the rate, um, and charges increase, which again, a pre-phase, um, pre-phases, um, over the next three years with a 19.8% total increase. It also looks at, um, our, uh, water flow fees. And so right now, when we're doing hydrant testing, the developers or those that have sprinkler systems are not having a take of the water that they're just running out onto the street. Um, so we would like to introduce, uh, like a minimum of a $200 for us to be on scene, on the site for the two hours of, you know, getting the flow test set up and doing the flow test and wrapping it up, um, as well as charging the user, um, that's doing the hydrant, the sprinkler testing, um, for the flow, um, that they're using. And so just to recapture some of those dollars, there's, I'm aware, we have to do a water loss audit every year.
Here.
And what is the average, what, 20,000 gallons is what a, a flow test caught, or how much water it's using? And we have a lot of sprinkled, um, buildings out there. And so if you take 20,000 gallons, I mean, you know, at least 10 of the buildings out there, that's water that's just literally going on the ground, the pound of, you know, so this is just a way to try to capture back some of those fees with the flow test. And then the other, um, item that is included in this ordinance introduction is the change to our capacity charge. Now, currently, our capacity charge, um, so again, when a new user comes on board, our capacity charge is $1,035 for the 5.8-inch meter. You will see that the proposed reading is a perception of us to increase the 5.8-inch meter capacity charge to 4,370. Significantly higher. So if you're packets, you should have also received, I called it a system distribution charge. Um, that would have received, I do like to refer, sort of magnifying glass, um, but you will see what the current rate is in the structure, all the way up to a four inch, because right now we only go up to a four inch on our charges, um, what the proposed by reading and how that kind of, um, would be implemented, but then we provided alternate. So we have two users that are getting ready to come on the system that would be eight-inch meters. So as you can see with reading suggestion, that eight-inch capacity or system development charge would be $350,000, okay? That's a lot to swallow for, I mean, any development. Um, but as you can see, if we compare it to other communities, Barbersville, Brownsville, Columbus, Greenfield, you can kind of see where they all kind of sit with those larger meter sizes. So we wanted to provide that as, um, just kind of a reference point. And then I kind of put together like the alternate, different alternates of going up every $500. And what would be palatable to the council, what would be, what would be palatable to our developers? We don't want to implement, um, a capacity, a system development charge that's so tight that we start staring developers off. But we also need a different type of utility and make sure we have what we need to get the job done. So I can answer any questions you might have.
Carmen, the red line.
And, and I, I apologize. What I handed out, I should have held until Carmen was done. It was distracting, and I apologize. The only thing different in that is on the, I think it's the third page, there's a new section that's in yellow.
Page six.
On page six, thank you.
Yes.
That changed some wording on our installation. And that came to light when we were looking at some other things, and it's like, well, if we're making changes to our water town code section, this would be a good time to bring that up to speed to what, how we are currently handling things. So I apologize for that, and that's what we would recommend at that point, or at this point, was that. Everything else is the same.
So Carmen, what are, what are Slim, I should, I guess I should ask him. What is your thoughts on this eight inch meter on system development? What is the, what is, what do you think would be?
Uh, the cost line, I guess, would be.
How much a developer should pay for an eight inch meter? Okay, what you, what are you proposing to do? Like, are you sticking it to three hundred and fifty, or?
I mean, Burgersville has one hundred and twenty thousand, and Brownsburg has.
Right, that's what I'm asking, so I'm asking what they, as a supervisor, what, you know, if it's a happy medium, or what we're gonna do.
I see it in like the two hundred and fifty range.
You mean the twenty-five-hundred range?
I'm talking further, further than eight inch.
All right, gotcha.
Eight inch.
It looks like, Carmen, I apologize, on the alternate for the three thousand per E D U, it looks like the, uh, numbers didn't get updated.
That was probably right around, like, two hundred and fifty.
Fifty, yeah.
Thank you.
So how do you determine the alternate? What, what defines the alternate one through six?
Basically just put in what we're currently charging at a thousand thirty-five. And I just added five hundred, just to see what it would, there's no, there wasn't any, it was just kind of an easy number to kind of go from fifteen hundred to two thousand, twenty-five hundred, three thousand, was what the math was wrong on, my calculations there. Uh, the, the thirty-five and four thousand. Because again, Reedy recommended forty-three seventy-six. So I kind of just took some.
Oh, that's just a, that's just kind of an example of potential where we could be not necessarily a selection of alternate one through six.
Yeah, it was, what do you think would be palatable to, um, to this?
And Carmen, going back to all the red lines on the document, um, how did, how did we get so far off on, on the red lines and the blues? How did the calculations? This was done by Reedy?
The red lines are, is implementing.
That's our old.
Is six-point-six, you start out with six-point-six percent increase. So right now, for, like, on page two, a five-eighths inch meter is thirty-one oh four, is like the base for four thousand gallons. And then the new rate would be thirty-three oh nine.
Okay, so that wasn't like old information that had been updated, that is existing rate? And, okay. I thought there were.
And then it's six percent the next year, and then, uh, thirty-three oh nine, which is thirty-five fourteen. And then six percent in twenty-twenty-seven, which then would be thirty-seven nineteen.
So you're only implementing a raise for three years?
Right.
Which is still not what Indiana American charged us. We're still biting.
No, but it's still the reason.
Help us, but it's, we're still losing.
No, this should get us, this should get us where we need to be to cover our.
At the end of the third page.
At the end of the third, yeah.
Until then, we'll be paying a little bit, but by the time it's done, we should be, be breaking.
Because what did Indiana American raise our bill? Wasn't it in the thirties?
I thought it was forty, I thought it was forty.
Yeah, I don't remember. It's somewhere between thirty and forty percent.
We're raising six percent, six percent, six percent, and that's still nowhere near what they.
From a percentage standpoint.
Percentage standpoint, yeah.
We will ultimately cover.
Right.
What Indiana Americans' increase is to us.
Okay.
But this isn't, their increase to us is a lot higher than our percentage increase to our customers.
Right.
So our margin will be thinner, but it will still exist.
I'm not really sure that the margin will be any thinner. Um, and you've had more discussions with the rate consultant about that, and there's a lot of other things that are being shuffled around that's part of this, too.
I think, I mean, at the end of the day, I don't know, I couldn't tell you what our revenue, what our revenue would be over that, because now we've, we've added in some projects that we want to get done. Um, and specifically for this water, for the water utility, is looking at about a hundred thousand dollars a year, um, of just improvements. So whether that be valves, or if we do have a water line that needs to be improved a little, or there's proactive improvements, instead of waiting for a water leak to happen, and then, oh, now we've got a ten thousand dollar cost of a project, um, to fix a water line or more, depending on what it is. But so starting to get more, um, using the, the revenues, and you'll see this, not necessarily with water, but when we get into the budget, you'll see that we've, we've asked to transfer money out of our operating into a depreciation fund, um, so that we can kind of earmark and set aside those dollars specific for projects, instead of just leaving it in the operating, for us to just willy-nilly kind of spend it and making sure that we're truly earmarking those depreciation and replacement of, of interest. Again, this is just an introduction, if anybody has any questions, we can, um, is there? I have to redo that calculation on the three thousand.
I did the calculation for the eight inch, and it would turn out to be two hundred and forty thousand.
So this is just an introductory, we're not gonna vote on anything tonight, so after. Right, yeah, what, what I'm saying is I'd like to have a meeting with Slim and Carmen to discuss that, if that would be all right with you guys. If you guys could see when you're both available, talk about it. I'd really like to be one-on-one with you guys, if you wouldn't mind, to figure out this for me, if you would. So if you could figure out a time, would you just email me and let me know what works best for you guys? Thank you.
Carmen, real quick, so we had a forty percent on American water increase. Which is approximately fifty-five, fifty-five thousand, if they've done some forty percent. Approximately. So we're still gonna be twenty-two percent delta when we raise the rates, and, and the town's gonna cover that. But that's at eighteen percent on the third year, six, six, and six, right? So we're still gonna have, so during that timeframe, of the second and the third year, that we're still gonna be twenty-eight, thirty, thirty-some-odd percent the second year, and it's gonna go up. So are we gonna deplete our resources in trying to cover, do we have adequate surplus?
We're still making money. But again, we've started to shift how we spend our money, and we can be specific and departmentalize and, and try to be more cognizant of making sure we're actually spending out of the water utility, things that are water-related. And, and that, so that's where we've shifted some of that money into the general fund, um, that in the past had been, it's a lot of, it's a lot of running. Now, the margins may not, our revenues may not be as big, um, because we're still kind of recovering from that, that, uh, Indiana American water increase.
Well, when you always operate in a delta, sometime, you know, you think you're gonna catch up, but you're always behind. So I just didn't want to, you know, be caught in the work, having this conversation.
If we feel like it's time to revisit the rates, that's one thing that this, that the town has not been proactive on, is staying on top of their rates and, and how, what it costs a, a number utility. And so if it's three years out and we start to look at, maybe we need to do another rate study, then that's what we'll do. Some, some communities automatically put a rate increase every year, like they just institute like a percent, you know? Until, you know, it's, let's just say, if I'm just gonna pick a number of two percent, every year it goes up to that. Not only some of it that we looked at as well, but for now, we're just looking at three, that's three phases over three years to implement the nineteen-point-eight percent.
And then it's on the, it's on the radar to reevaluate, like in the five, every five to seven years, and that way we don't get ourselves behind, so to speak.
Might be helpful. I'm looking at the rate study and the operating expenses for the calendar year twenty-twenty-three, which is kind of what's referred to as the test year, that you kind of base your, uh, rates on, or your rate increase on. Total expenses was one-point-three million dollars. Of that, three hundred and fifty-five thousand was what we had to pay to Indiana Americans. So you can see that when Indiana American raises their rates, they're making up a smaller piece of the whole of our expenses. So we don't need to cover it by raising ours the same thirty-eight percent that they raised to us.
Well, that would never fly.
So far this year, just for perspective, so far this year, we still have two more months. Um, have we paid November, the bill for November and water? For it, just about four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in purchased water expenditures. Anybody else want to meet with Tim and Slim and I, and you, to discuss this?
I might be interested, depending on my regular work schedule.
Any other questions?
Um, question to Slim about our Aquifer test and stuff, since we're talking about water. Is there any?
They came and set a smaller pump, um, for the last. And it was running the pump size that they had, which is small, to see if it flowed water. And it was producing about twenty gallons per minute. But they're going to come back and camera it and see what it's kind of sitting on, see if it's sitting with bedrock, what it is, and check the screen and the casing of it before they really dump the big pump in there and move it up the flow. But it all flowed clear.
So that's a good sign, I guess?
It's a good thing.
Okay.
Is that on this side of the interstate or the other side? This side.
All right, thank you. So do we need, we just, this is just informational, do we need to?
Well, it's introduction.
Introduction.
You can approve it on first reading if you want, and, or pass it through first reading, I should say. Still have to have a public hearing at your December meeting, after which then you can give it final approval. But the expectation is that you will look at the, uh, do we call it system development charge? Capacity charge.
Yeah. We need to decide which one.
And determine what you want that to be. And it was, I view the maximum of four thousand three hundred seventy-six per E D U, coming from the rate consulting, what is permissible, not necessarily what they recommend that you adopt. Obviously, you have to decide what your community, you know, should have for that amount, and what you want to charge the developers, and what you think makes sense from an economic development standpoint and so forth. So you can, anywhere between what we currently have and that forty-three hundred dollar number needs to be decided. And we have to publish notice of the hearing. We can publish it with the, the, in the four thousand three hundred seventy-six, and that's fine, you can adjust it next month, uh, after the hearing, and that's fine. As long as you don't adjust it higher, and there shouldn't be any problem. So, and if you don't feel good about making any determination on that tonight, that's fine, uh, but.
Well, I think Mr. Brown has some questions that he likes, so.
Yeah.
Like, just table it for next week after the additional.
Just accept it as introduction.
Or accept it as introduction with further discussions?
I, I still think you want to publish notice of the hearing, and we'll just use the numbers we have, unless you prefer to wait on that. If you wait. Means you won't be able to implement until.
I'm seeing downside, just thinking of them as they are, and then they can be adjusted down.
Right.
They, they won't go up, right?
You can't adjust back.
But there's no, until, if you post, if you post this and they happen to go up for some reason, does that get us in a bind?
We can't go up.
We can't go up.
According to our consultants, we can't.
Oh, okay. So this is the worst case?
Right.
Okay.
I would be in support of publishing that.
That seems like reasonable, so everybody on board posting as, as is?
Yep.
I'll fine tune it, so, I mean, it sounds pretty, pretty solid.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that, or is it?
No.
Okay. We had consensus posting that. Twenty-two-four dash fifteen, Sally Ordinance twenty-twenty-five.
So this is basically looking at, um, the salaries for the. Um, in the past, what we have done is taken like the deputy marshal position, because that's the position that had the most, uh, most employees in it, and kind of using a, a percentage off of that. Which in the past is on two percent, three percent, five percent, just depending on, on levels. But, um, when I took the deputy marshal position, it gave us a little over, um, a two-thousand-dollar raise, um, for each, um, position. So in the salary ordinance, um, I got in here that a proposed two-thousand-dollar increase for all full-time employee, uh, positions. Um, and we've got, uh, the only thing that was just a little bit of an, uh, an add-on, um, over last year is the fire marshal. Um, he has been doing, um, a present of, this, this year is making a twelve-thousand-dollar stipend. Um, he upped that to fifteen thousand dollars, um, as he's been doing a lot of, a lot more inspections, being a lot more hands-on than we've had in previous fire marshal positions. Um, and so there's that position. Um, the main thing with this is something that's, that's a little different than what we've, we've been doing, is at least Slim and I, the expectation is that these are not just going to be automatic raises. Um, these will be performance-based. We're getting to where we have a lot of really well-paid people, um, in the private, or in the public sector. Obviously, private sector has a lot more flexibility, um, but we've got some positions that, um, you know, I feel, I can't speak first line, I'll just, I feel like we, we pay our people well, we compensate them well with their time off, and help their kids, and other benefits that they receive. Um, so I feel like it's fair to, to look at, you know, some sort of raise. Um, but again, those will be performance-based, and, and y'all can assess somebody's performance if you want to, so.
That was my question. Uh, and I'm new to the game on this, it's my first year dealing with P A and everything like that. So I don't know where I fit, what, what I can do, so I'm, Stephen's here, he can tell me what I can, what I can't. But my question is, who evaluates you, Slim, Chief, and the Clerk Treasurer? To, because if you're doing a performance raise, that means you guys should have to have a performance review and get a raise too accordingly, because it's not fair for us to come in and give all our administrators that two thousand dollars and not give everybody else, because it's appropriated by us saying, yes, everybody can go with this. But who, I think that there's some checks and balances in my end, that says, hey, if you guys report to the council, then the council should do that, like Rick's raise, or Clerk Treasurer, or your, your son. Correct.
The state mandates what she gets.
Right, and that, and I, that's why I'm asking.
Two points, two points.
But you can't lower her.
Yes.
Can't lower it, but on, as in the utility clerk proportion of it, I suppose it's set by us.
Because, yeah, I don't know, that's why I'm asking these questions to figure.
Weren't we supposed to, not we, I mean, before I got on here, didn't they yearly approve? Because it's, they're appointed, right, administration?
We're appointed by.
Yes.
Right, were we supposed to do an annual appointment, or no? I remember.
I do know one county what does that.
At one point, did you not, Rick, do you remember that? I remember one time saying something about Norm and you, and, and they all voted.
For everybody else.
That's what I was wondering, is it anywhere in our ordinance?
There's nothing that says it's for a fixed time, and there's no contract.
A minute or something?
And if I remember, at least with one town manager, probationary period, there were the review after.
Right.
But besides that kind of situation, I don't think there's anything that's fixing the term.
I know in Franklin, Indiana, Franklin County, they do that with their director of development, their inspectors, they got to apply for that job every year, and that was kind of like, ooh, I didn't like.
That's too much.
I went to class with her and she was telling me that she has to bid for her job every year. I was like that.
We're not doing a good job, I hope.
Yeah, I would do, wow, I couldn't, I felt sorry for her when she told me that, but that's the question I have. Something that councils should be delegating, I mean, so how I take this is that you chose the raise for Rick and them guys for Slim and across the board.
And that was the discussion like that we had had as we were setting the budget fund, which encompasses all a police budget, and kind of talked about what those raises would be. It wasn't just me picking in them.
Right, right.
But it was, you know, talking with, you know, and that was kind of one of the things too, is that we actually had a discussion and said, maybe we don't do raises, but if we, let's see what we could afford, if we can, you know, but I mean, we kind of, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like we, three of us felt like we're kind of in a, we feel like we pay the people well.
That's one of the reasons.
Automatically, every year, we get a hundred dollars extra on longevity, so there are some sort of smaller kind of raises. And like I said, there's, there's still benefits that we've not, I don't say taken away, but you know, one of the things we also adjusted, like how much we put in HRA. It used to only be a thousand dollars, right, Andrea? And then we had.
Originally, it was a thousand.
Like one year it was 12,000, one year it was 15,000. So, but we, we've adjusted that as, and our premiums have actually gone down, but we've not kind of taken away the HRA. We also offer the HRA that people don't pay our way. And so, you know, there's added benefits that don't have, well, HRA has cash value, but, you know, that's.
I agree, but my point is, if we're making our employees do an evaluation, then I think management should have to follow the same rule. I mean, everybody's on the same playing field that way, everybody's treated equal, you can't say one boss gets this and one boss gets this, but this boss don't get this. And I think it's a way for us council to interact with you guys and see a performance and see how things are going. And then council decides, okay, here, that way it's more fair, not that I'm trying to take anything away. I'm always for all employees, but I think it's best that we own up, just like the workers do, or the, you know, the laborers, the officers, the office staff, if they're going through a review, then our management should have to go through a review, because if there's anything that one of the council would like to see tweaked or something, they could mention it in there.
I would also ask that, again, if there's any, if there's any questions or concerns that you guys know that you can always call and ask, so it's not like.
Oh, I agree, 100%.
Somebody, and whether that be a manager or an employee, that they should, when you get a performance evaluation, my opinion is you should already know what it is going into it, because you, you can self-evaluate yourself, and if you don't, you're pulling your weight on your job, as long as you know what your job description is, you're doing your job.
There shouldn't be no problem, I agree.
I guess my.
Probably do it as an executive session. He said we can't.
Well, you have to be careful on the executive session, and you can have individual job performance evaluations in executive session, but you cannot discuss as part of that in the executive session, their salary, their compensation, or their benefits during the budget process. Obviously, we're in the budget process, at least that's how I would treat this. So you can evaluate, but you need to not have any part of that discussion be their salary, compensation, or benefits.
Any conversation of that has to be in an open meeting.
Correct, yeah.
So is there, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
I guess it would seem to me probably we're a little late in this budget cycle to implement what Tim's proposing.
Well, you could have executive session as long as you don't discuss the salary, compensation, or benefits. And I mean, the performance and, and things related to their performance is fair game in the executive session.
No, I just mean more in the revenue.
Right.
I mean, as far as where we are in this budget cycle.
Well, only reason this come up is because at first I asked this question a couple months ago, is this a flat rate across? And I was told it was. And then just recently, I heard that it's a performance raise. And that's why what brought this question up is because it changed from being a flat rate to performance rate, so that made me more concerned about our employees, that they have to go through an evaluation, but does our management does, to keep it all at the same playing field.
And let me say this also, just, it's, we're paying per the position, so let's say we hire someone new, they may not start, this is what the max, what this position pays. And so if we, you know, previous administration kind of got away from what we called tenure, and everybody made the same amount, didn't matter if you're on the first day or you're 10th year. And, you know, and maybe somebody that's coming in isn't ready to make exit, which is the max. So right now, everybody's making the max of what that salary position allows. Because this kind of, you know, is something that we've wanted to do for a while, and they come working performance-based. And, you know, like I said, it's something that if we hired, Slim's hired new folks, and I couldn't tell you, are they making the top wage?
I, I think if you're going to do that, you need to set a beginning, like a junior or something position, because to me, if you're doing that job, you're both doing the same job, and you both should be paid the same.
We are all making the same, just what everybody else.
Now, Rick, when he had, this was, when he's had new officers come in, they had to go to, what's it called?
Academy.
Academy, he didn't pay him the full amount, he made it like a thousand less or something. And then when they finished the academy, they got that raise, but he labeled it as an officer in training or something. So if we're going to start new people out less, then maybe we should come up with a title that makes it.
But don't you think that that's also like a probationary period?
Well, then, that's what I mean, make it a probationary.
You just start your folks out at the top, they kind of had to, to make sure that they were going to perform the duties that.
But they knew coming in, they were probationary.
Right.
So.
It's been a minute since I've looked at the employee handbook, but aren't people we hire now, aren't they aware that they come in as probationary for however many months?
Yeah.
It used to, I don't know if it, did it get changed?
It's not changed, that's later in the conversation, kind of get that.
So maybe we should add a little thing in here that talks about.
We do talk about, like, we've.
In the handbook, is there a probationary?
I believe right now there is. Well, probationary, just employment in general, not so much the salary.
First 90 days is usually.
Obviously, in most municipalities, too, this is, for each job slot, there is a. Minimum to maximum.
Yes.
And then where you are paid within that depends upon, A, what you negotiated when you were hired, and then B, based upon your supervisor. Ultimately, in, in our case, it'd be the director of administration decided.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a problem with that. I also don't have a problem with, we don't, we're not a huge entity. I, I don't have a problem with it.
Right, that's how we're set up, is we got a base and then a maximum in our, in our descriptions where I work. Everything's based on, you start in between here and here, your experience level gets you where you need to be in the middle, if it's in the middle, you get paid in the middle, if it's a top one, you get paid at the top, if you're just starting, you get paid, there's a maximum minimum, which kind of gives our supervisors a place to start, where you know without having to come and ask everything from council, hey, can I do this, can I do that? So that's the other thing. So, and you got this in front of you, so our, our wastewater and everything and all these pays, they're not what we're paying everybody now, this is what we could pay up to, correct?
Correct.
And they'll do a, they'll do a, a meeting with them.
If you don't need it.
And, and tell them.
I'll tell you, like, last year, we met with all of our folks individually, and Mr. Rick did as well, but in the previous years, we didn't.
No.
It was just like, sign here, and I'm like, what am I signing? Or, like, there was a year, I kept asking for a performance review and didn't get one, but I was like, I didn't even sign anything, so that's where we're looking to get a little better at our folks and me.
I feel like that's what you pay the supervisor for, it's evaluated throughout the year, and if he has a problem with employee, then he deals, deals with it then.
I agree 100% with that, I'm not as concerned as employees.
We deal with.
I mean, we've lowered some bodies, we've lowered some bodies before because they weren't performing.
And I have no problem with that, but I'm just saying supervisors need to be, go through a meeting with council to determine what their raise shall be, if the employees are going to do it, then the supervisors ought to do it too. And then that makes fair playing game.
I guess the way that I see it, and I, I understand what you're getting at, Tim, and I don't necessarily disagree with you, but I generally see every one of these meetings as a performance review of.
Of our administrators.
They're going to be there, they're going to be standing there, we're going to ask me questions that we want, we, and they're going to give us an update, you know, as general rule, obviously Chief Funkhauser's out at the moment.
But they are the, of the.
Employees of the town, they are the ones that we deal with directly.
100%.
Continuously, so I, I don't really feel we need to have a first review beyond having them in front of us and, and answer to us, but I can also.
I just say that when you get a review from council, put that in your file, then it always protects you on everything, hey, I've always had a good review, here's my views in the past, it's in writing, it shows that I'm doing a good job, this is what's going on. I think it just, just like with us and getting our review, let's say we have an issue later on the, well, why do I got an issue? I've been, you've said this for years, that I've been doing a good job, but now all of a sudden, I'm not.
Our review, we just get voted out.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
To your point, it helps with documentation.
Correct.
Because if there is something that goes the wrong way or a different way than what we think, there's documentation.
Documentation is so important.
So important in our job today, because everything's public records.
I mean, we're all going to get flying colors, so.
It goes back to saying the same thing back, years back when we were going off. Contract can be disputed.
Correct.
If I'm not performing, and I don't need a contract to tell me I'm not performing, if the board doesn't like my performance, then it's time for me to go.
There you go. I just think it's a good paper trail to have, and that keeps, that shows everybody that we're across the board keeping it straight for everybody.
I think Tim's made valid points, I think Joe made a valid point, these meetings are a good representation of the accomplishments and goals and what we're trying to do.
I agree.
I, I do, I mean, it would be, it would be hard for me to go to my blog and say, hey, I, I need a $5,000 raise, I talk to you once a month, but yet I don't provide any of my objectives, goals, or accomplishments over the course of 12 months, it's hard to go back and quantify that. So in my eyes, it, you know, just a quick and dirty, you know, kind of a summary and, you know, just to kind of keep it clean, and if we're doing it for the subordinates, I think we ought to do it for everybody to keep it unique and keep it qualified amongst everybody, but that's my two cents.
That's kind of how I feel, and I don't see nothing wrong with it, you guys don't mind talking to us, you're doing a good job, all of you are, I mean, we've been down this road before, I just like to keep it equal tall.
I've been in a lot of conversations where they'll say, well, did you document that? Have you documented that?
But sometimes it's nice to, someone to tell you, you're doing a good job and a nice evaluation. So, just my opinion, just my opinion.
Carmen, is there like a, is there like a template that you're using?
We do, but I think it needs some love, and as we get further into the conversation, I think that they might have some suggestions if we move forward with kind of the later in the.
That review paper gets very tricky on the upper part.
You got to be able to add some track, yeah.
We tried it before in the past, it just, it's, it's, it's doing evaluation.
Right.
It's subjective. You got the job description, like, the job description's fine, we've got the max or the goal you start at, and the supervisor should be the one.
You're wrong.
We still make, I still make notes of my employees, you know, when we get something or something, we still document, I've got a employee's back file, I might recall, documents everything anyway.
Just to quickly answer a question that was raised, your probationary period, it's six months, 180 days. And that does not reference at all salary.
So we need to, my question is, is to you, like, for me to make a, to accept this on that, with the evaluation on administration, can I do that or, or do we just, how, how would that work, I guess I'm.
I think we can decide we want to evaluate our employees anytime that we want to.
Well, I don't know, because every time I mention something, they throw this ordinance up and says, we can't do this, we can't do that, so I'm just curious where we go. That's why I asked the question, because I will make sure I'm doing it right, you know, that way I'm not causing heartache.
We obviously want to make sure we are compliant with the open door law, and you can only have executive sessions, private meetings for certain things, personnel evaluations are permitted, however, you can't discuss salaries, compensation, or benefits.
Just job performance.
Just job.
Just job performance.
And so I would be, and since, since this clearly talks about benefits and salaries, et cetera, meaning this ordinance, I would be reluctant to tie that directly to having an executive session on their performance, because that does not look like you're not just tying it together.
I feel like we've done in the past is if we have a problem with performance, we have an executive session.
Yes.
Whenever their issue has arisen, that's simply what's on, and I've always.
I prefer that way.
I feel like.
I'm one of five.
We have a performance executive session, we will, but since we haven't this year, so.
Well, I guess we should probably do something with this, and I think Stephen is correct, we should not add what, if we're, and, and I'm not saying we're not going to do what Tim is suggesting, I'm saying that I'd agree with Stephen, that it should not be part of this, because that's asking for trouble.
And I rely on the law, you're part of this, I'll be honest, because I don't know, but I just, like I said, if I have, so what I'm worried about, let's say everything goes through, and we pass this, blah, 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 but no one does the environment, the interviews on our administrations, so then it didn't really do what we were supposed to do in the first place.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's fine, sir, go ahead.
I was going to say, at any time you would like to evaluate our employees, I think you can just make a, make a, make a motion and ask for an executive session to be scheduled to do that, and if the majority of the council agrees, then it happens.
But that's what I want to know, why can't, because like I said, new to this, you can't discuss raises, you can't, but it automatically says, once we do this, they can give everybody up to $2,000 raise.
Right.
At a performance, but it doesn't say in here that the management will do a performance evaluation or do an evaluation with who.
So we can, we can do an executive session next month.
Yeah, I, I guess what I was going to say is that it's because of the open door law.
Right.
Us to do the performance review is fundamentally different than a supervisor doing it. Supervisor just walks in, they do it, they, they run through, ding, 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 ding.
We have to do something that's completely different.
Because the open door law applies to us on that, we can't do it in the context of this ordinance, this ordinance has to stand separately from whatever we decide to do as far as reviewing, as this body reviewing employee.
Right. And, and I understand that part, because it's the same thing what happens over where I'm from, you know, they, each supervisor's graded by council and stuff like that too, and I understand that, I just want to, I just don't want to not follow through for something. If this is, I mean, if we're going to say we're going to do it, then I'd like to do it, I'd like to have it all legit, like. If this is, I mean, if we're gonna say we're gonna do it, then I'd like to do it. I'd like to have it all legit, like Deb says, paperwork, paperwork, paperwork. Let's get it all written down, figure out reviews and that. Money, that's just something what's gotta be done separately. That's not a big deal to me. It's just making sure everybody follows the same. Because I think if we're up to 2,000, then everybody should be performed on that. Because if it's budgeted for it, that means they can get it. So I, I just hate to not see them, everybody get what they deserve. I guess I'm saying if it's budgeted for it, and the town can afford it, why aren't we doing it? For, because some people will say, okay, my employees, I want them all to get $2,000. Well, some other employees that might not be as well-liked or in a clique might only get a thousand dollars. And I, I don't know. I, I think that's just one of the things that I worry about.
Is the, is the council.
We don't have to do a performance based and just give all those things for $2,000. But again, like kind of what you're saying is to be able to provide a one-time-a-year, not like we don't do it throughout the year, but to do a one-time-a-year kind of a, here's some things you're doing well, here's some things to, to work on and like kind of what are, you know, talk to them about their personal goals and do that one-on-one time with them.
What would you think of this, Tim? If we amended it so that it was a thousand dollars flat for everybody?
And that the other thousand dollars was their performance-based portion.
I could swallow that a little better because I think they, I think they deserve at least.
Still have the other review.
The, the review.
Still has the same review. We still have the same documentation, everything. Everybody gets a raise, but, uh, the, that, the second half of it is performance-based.
I know where I, where I'm from. They, they give so much percentage and then at a higher date, they give us so much again too. And that was kind of compensated for that. So I just, like I said, I, I have no heartburn with that.
Would you put that in here?
It's not. I don't believe either is in there. Carmen, you can tell us, but I think the, the idea of $2,000 and whether it's performance-based or flat, that's not embodied in here. That's just what you would use to administer it. And I don't think that it would, it's necessary, nor would it be efficient to try and amend this ordinance to get into that level of detail. I think if you just direct your.
Right.
Supervisors, that that's how you want the salaries to be awarded or, or increases to be awarded. That should take care of it.
So we probably need to take action on this before we take action on that. Am I understanding, council?
That's, that's up to you, how you want to do that. And you can put it together.
Well, I guess, um, I would make a motion to approve this. And then after that, we can hash out the others. So I'd make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-15.
And would this be first reading, right?
Yes.
First reading.
And you mean hash out the other specific, what are we hashing?
Whether we direct our supervisors to give a thousand and then a thousand flat and a thousand performance or 2,000 flat, or whether it's all possible.
Like, I could deal with that. And then that way, we could hash it out a little bit and talk about, evaluate. Like say whether it's the president of the board doing the evaluations with you and then just, you know, however that goes, at least you're getting that one-on-one with someone to see what your goals are. If what you would like to see the town, your goals, Slim's goals, the chief's goals, on where you would like to see this go would be a big help for us too, is what I'm thinking.
All performance, the operations administration through, through us or how, how it works? What's your thoughts on that?
No, their performance based for their people underneath them.
Underneath them. And then they report to the board on their evaluations.
All utility workers will go under Slim and then all administrative will go under.
I don't want to review every utility worker.
No, no, I don't. That's not, yeah, that's not even.
Okay.
That's, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying our administrators.
Okay. I, yeah, it would be the chiefs.
The chief.
Some.
Carmen. And then, uh, the chief Funkhauser, I guess.
Any decision to be made.
Right. They get 17 and 11 no matter what. Yeah, they're getting underpaid anyway.
I could get on board with that.
Yeah.
I think I can.
Wait, Joe's got a motion on the table for.
Oh, yeah, I guess for, I have a motion for ordinance 2024-15.
I'll second it.
To work out the details later.
We'll ask that after we pass this first reading.
Roll call vote, please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Eric Goodecker?
Yep.
Yes.
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 Five to zero.
So now we need to.
I'd make a motion to make a thousand flat and a thousand performance base. And we direct our administrators to apply it that way.
I'll second it.
And then roll call vote for that?
And then the reviews will be done for administration by council.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm doing this part.
Okay, okay.
Separate motion.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goodricker? Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Josh Taylor?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Pass five to zero.
So now I get, I'll make the motion that reviews for administrations goes through the town council. They'll go through the same review process that the employees go through. And the town council will be aware of that and deal with that part of it.
And potentially fall in the same guidelines of the distribution of potential raise?
Correct.
Is that?
Correct.
Although the, in the executive session, you can't discuss.
Right, we can't discuss that.
Okay.
That would have to be in an open meeting.
Is your mo, is, is your motion, Tim, that at the December meeting, we hold an executive session and apply the same performance?
Yes. That way we can wrap this up this year to get everybody compensated and paid in the new year.
There's a motion.
Do we have a second? That would be for the executive session?
Yes.
For performance for the administrators?
I'll second it. For our executive session.
Roll call vote, please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Brad Goodecker? Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Josh Taylor?
No.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Pass four to one.
So on the executive session, Mr. Washington, how, how does that?
I will take care of publishing notice, not publishing it or something. Providing notice under the open door law for that. Question, the first question is, how much time do you feel like you need for it? Because we need to tell them or put in the notice what time the executive session will start. Your, your normal meeting time, of course, is seven o'clock. If you think you can get it done in an hour, we can say six o'clock.
No.
We can do 6:30, whatever you think it's gonna take.
Uh, under the current circumstances, I would think a half hour would be sufficient.
Yeah, six thirty.
That's just me.
Hour at the most, minimum, half hour?
And talking about all, well, three, assuming that Eric can't make it.
Yeah, well, I'm assuming we're gonna exact Chief Funkhauser.
Okay.
In my opinion, that report by council of chief.
Okay. So thirty minutes enough for the three of them?
I would think so. Is that good with everybody?
One minute for chief, one minute for Carmen, and 28 minutes for Slim.
Talkative sort.
I know, right?
All right, we'll set it up for 6:30 then.
Nice question. Is there gonna be a standard form that you guys are using, but each supervisor needs to also use the current one that is there? Because I think there's like two or three that are out in our forms currently. I just want to make sure we're using the correct one.
What are you using for employees?
Um, there's different ones for each, there's like three out there that I've seen.
So there's, there's no template for operations or management or anything?
Well, we started with one, and we didn't like the numbers for that one, so we switched to. And then it got changed around because of the, we're picking letters or something. And then it went back to.
Letters didn't add up?
Well, I mean, if, if, if you have that type of challenge, then we'd need to probably button that up if there's three or four that nobody.
I think we're just gonna get to eight right now, so.
Yeah.
I've got the last one we've used.
I've got one too, and that's what most of the counties, counties use. That's where we got it from. I can forward you a copy if you guys want it or not.
Carmen, which one are you using?
I don't know what it's called, but it has like a range of, you know, are they doing well and you put in a score and then you add them all up and.
That's the one I have.
Kind of the, what definitely provided us in the comments.
It's the one I got at a conference one time. Just send, just send that one. We can, can we kind of fill that out and bring it to the executive side? Yeah, just send that one. Because it talks about performances and.
As long as you're not sharing it amongst yourselves prior to the.
I don't see anybody.
I don't talk to anybody.
All right, you're on town council? Okay.
2024-16?
So this is the ordinance approving new stormwater reserve needs. Um, again, similar to the water rate, people do their investmentation over a few years. Um, the rate increase for the total of three years is $1 in a water requirement, currently a $1.50 per year used. This is equivalent, let out in it. And the stormwater board passed a resolution, uh, to forward onto the town council the introduction of this ordinance to again start, um, January 1st, 2025, going from $7.50 to $7.87. So, I mean, another 30 some cents and then another 30 some cents till we get to the $1.11. Now, originally kind of located with this rate is just so it's, it matches what the other rates if we're looking at. You know, $1.11 cents isn't a lot to the folks. Um, but along with the water rate increase and, um, the trash rate increase and because of that nature, just kind of it'll all add up. So, um, that's what's being proposed. Like I said, it came through the stormwater board from last March. And if I could use what you are, have any questions?
Need a public hearing?
No hearing on it. The hearing, the public hearing was taken care of at the stormwater board.
Okay, that's what I thought. Don't go.
Do you approve 2024-16?
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Goodecker?
Yes.
Josh Taylor?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Pass five to zero.
And that would be first reading. And it would come back in December for final read unless you decide to do immediate action.
Does this need immediate action by then? Anything? No, so we're coming. Water, your utility budgets, is that the next one?
Yes. So in front of you, and the spreadsheet looks a little different than what you all have seen in the past. Uh, but you'll have the one that's water operating, the other that's sewer operating. Um, again, the people to be minimized and focused on three main areas to contribute for your number. Um, again, the people could minimize and focus on the three main areas to contribute to your revenue, which is the legal management. Um, we also did raise some salaries out of uh, so for some of the salaries out of water and sewer. Uh, but you will still see some of those salaries in there. Um, the end goal is the generalization, spending the money with the utility or with the department, so it makes the most sense to be studying with it. Um, on the waters, uh, you see um, the main uh, kind of aha moment. Um, but the purchase water obviously has been a big, we don't exactly know where it's gonna fall to, like a big kind of like a capital investment. To the lengthness that, you know, the cover right now, you're reading fifty-five thousand dollars worth of water um per month um. And kind of looking, so that is a huge increase. I said the year where it was forty-five, the expense of our issue. And that's only a partial year in the new rate for many of our waters. Um, the other thing that's a little bit different than what we've done in the past is a pilot. And then something that we talked about as we were passing the um, the budgets that were uh, that are approved by the D L G F. A pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes where if a municipal owns a utility, they can voluntarily pay the town. Um, approximating what a property tax is, is if we divide up, since the town, the utilities buy on municipal services. Uh, we're not subject to property taxes like a credit utility. This is a way for us to offset revenue and to transfer some of those monies into the general fund. Um, so for water, we're proposing um, using the town's tax rate. And I'll go into this a little bit for the, or it kind of goes dovetails with the next bullet as well, the pilot analysis that was put together by Adam Stone. Uh, we're projecting um, to move forty-seven thousand dollars for water into the general fund. That would help offset some of those expenses that we've moved into the general fund. Um, and then on sewer, we're looking at sixty-nine thousand and sixty dollars being moved into the general fund uh for the pilot. Uh, the other thing, you don't see this in water. Um, I explained this earlier, we need to look, we're going to look to transfer uh money from the operating revenue into a depreciation fund. But as you can see with this year's water budget, um, we're gonna be playing catch up and we actually show a little bit of a deficit. That doesn't mean that in the end of the day in twenty twenty-five, we would be running a deficit. Uh, again, until we kind of have a better feel of how the new rate is going to impact us as well as the expenditures of the purchased water and such, um, we'll kind of have a better handle. But right now, we are showing a little bit of a uh, a deficit um on the water. But again, I feel like we can, if we sort of have a water operating budget on the diet, it can be true. And like I said, I, I feel like I over um, budgeted for purchased water, but until we kind of know how that's all gonna shake out, we're gonna be safe, not sorry. The goal for next year is to not allow any of our appropriations to go negative. So as usual, the appropriation report now, and as has been done in the past, you've seen a lot of negatives. Um, the mentality had been, well, it's the water operator, it's the water, so we can go negative, it depends on the D L G operator that does it. In my opinion, I don't think that's doing good business. And I feel like we needed it better at truly being, staying within our budget of what we set. What would be the point of setting your budget if we just planned to expect? Um, and so you'll see, um, like I said, we don't show any transfer of, of revenues uh into a depreciation fund for water just yet. Uh, but in the sewer, we are projecting um, to move uh, two hundred and uh, twenty-six thousand dollars and four hundred and forty-eight dollars to twenty-six two thirty-eight as um, from operating into the depreciation fund for some reason. Um, so again, this just kind of would help us earmark those dollars for true uh projects. Um, rather not, and help us not overspend if we don't have the money truly in the bank. Um, it can be hard to overspend that money. And so again, just trying to do a little bit better than maybe what we've done in the past. Um, on the sewer budget, there's some things to find out there. Nothing that's really um outrageous, other than again, the pilot fees that we're looking at transferring to general fund and the, the money into depreciation. I can answer any questions for you. Um, and any questions on the pilot as well. There'll be money from store and water going into the general fund as well, that's from the stormwater board to discuss.
I don't understand why you feel it's necessary to pay the building commissioner and inspector out of the general fund.
Because that's where our building permit money is revenue. It's a, it's a building.
So you're paying it out of the permit fund?
Well, we're, we're, we're still having to adjust how we're going to grow the revenues. In my opinion, every department should show some sort of evidence. Um, right now, building permits have, have brought in significant amount of money. And I can say that very little of that is going towards community development.
Right.
So it's, it's, yeah, we're, we're easing into these, these things. They can't just say rip off the Band-Aid and, sorry, you gotta generate your own revenue. But if it does, planning and zoning, the general fund expenditure, and that's where we pay legal fees out of. Except for we made a budget of the math money and legal fees for planning and zoning. Um, so it's always been paid out of water and sewer when it has maybe nothing to do with water and sewer.
Well.
If it's planning commission B Z A, et cetera.
So what does the commissioner do?
They issue the building permits, they inspect the buildings.
I know the inspector inspects, but.
The building commissioner inspects too.
Commercial.
Building commissioner has been inspecting um, all the commercial and industrial projects and then filling in on the residential as well. But they're the ones that puts their name on the building permit and on the certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
So we have an inspector that kind of assists throughout the process with some of the inspections. Um, but it's ultimately the building commissioner that's putting their signature on C of O's and such.
So the houses too?
Well, you have sewer and water labor, um, negative forty-eight percent.
Last year, we have two people that are paid out of sewer and water, but last year we budgeted a hundred and eighteen thousand for both positions. So we have three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for two positions. Really, so that's why there's that reduction. Basically, we had, we showed like, basically they're saying we had four positions that we were paying for that, but we wanted, we only had two. Two and we're split fifty-fifty, so if you truly wanted to say one's paid out of water, one's paid out of sewer, this is sixty, or fifty-nine thousand is what you're looking at.
But it was a hundred and eighteen.
It was fifty-nine thousand last year.
Cause fifty-seven thousand is what you have here. Fifty-seven thousand was paid out of sewer and fifty-seven thousand was paid out of water. Each was getting half. So that's only a hundred and eighteen.
Right, but we had budgeted in last year, in this year's budget, a hundred and eighteen thousand out of sewer and a hundred and eighteen thousand out of water. So we somehow got conflicted.
Right, okay.
There's the difference. And you'll see my, my notes adjustments over here. Those are my back and forth with, with Adam. So some of it is ended. So this is just an introduction. We can totally dive into it a little bit deeper. Um, as I was working through this with Adam, uh, just, you know, we kind of got down to the last minute that put in this, finished up.
So it's just kind of working out pretty, pretty good for you?
Has anybody had a suggestion on your book taking it over?
Good job, Carmen, putting all this together.
We'll get better.
So was that part of the pilot analysis and training? So that was, okay, so that's come by. Parks Board coaching and training from context design, I believe?
Yes, so last month you all appointed uh Parks Board. And with this being our first time, I'll re-sprint out the context through working with our master plan. Um, and kind of, you know, I think some of the concerns at council have been, you know, what's, what's the Parks Board job? And how do we keep them within uh, how do we set up some parameters on what, what we want them to do and, and so on and so forth? And make sure that they don't get in over the, their heads, either the good way or a bad way. And so um, I'd asked Fred to put together, and he had done this way back then, um, pre-tornado, um, to put together a Parks Board training. Uh, and what that would look like and helping us and the legal council kind of doing orientation, helping them understand what their job is and what their job isn't. And then kind of helping to set that, that vision casting, that board retreat, um, just to kind of pull everybody together and, and kind of get, get them moving on the right path um to start. And then the plan will be done to, to get going back on the master plan. So um, it does look like a lot. Um, like I said, pre-tornado, we had, it was ten thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, this is a little bit higher, uh, just as time has uh evolved, price went up. Um, so I'd like for you all to potentially consider looking at having some park board coaching um and training just as we get set up. And again, just to kind of help, I know a couple of you have some park board over, uh, Parks Board and, and run around it.
So it's twelve thousand four hundred. Is that what yours?
Yes.
Okay, how long is this training?
Um, let's see, he's got, I mean, it, it would be, the board retreat wouldn't be until six months after. I believe in our plan, he's got a better timeline on, on everything that he's uh, obviously, it, it, there's not a specific time of when this would start and when it would end, other than the only kind of is the park board is about six months after the first meeting that they do a meeting. So I'm looking at at least six months to nine months.
I think six months is late. I mean, they're gonna make, start making decisions, aren't they?
Well, they don't have the money right now, so I don't know what decisions they'll be expecting in setting the master plan.
To even know how to engage or, you know, how to, and what's this thirty-eight thousand five hundred?
That's already been approved. That's for the master plan.
Gotcha.
I just, that's not included because that's the professional services agreement. We would just kind of add this on, on as an event, or they would complete the professional services agreement on the.
So this is on top of that. This is on top of thirty-eight.
These two are the comprehensive plan and two different entities.
Master plan's already been approved, you know, it came out of the.
Okay.
This, the twelve thousand four hundred, that was ten thousand eight hundred pre-tornado. Um, it is to, for board training, orientation, retreat, and kind of helping them get set up and make sure we're.
Would this group be working hand in hand with the master plan people to kind of, because it's kind of gonna overlap, right?
So the board, the board will, will be partially involved in the master plan, or they can be as involved as they want, as long as, you know, it's, and we've set up a stakeholder meeting like we did with the comprehensive plan. So there'd be stakeholders that we kind of pull together, similar to the comprehensive plan as far as I can make it. So I would like to have context help us with this, or else I feel like we're gonna just become lingers from figuring out this tough thing all around. Which is, would be fine if we had a parks director, but we don't have a parks director. They kind of help you that guidance on what can you do in the next.
And, and, and approving this, when do you think you'll start having funds in that department to take this and actively, actively put this into place?
So in order, a majority of the funds would be available through the Department of Natural Resources. And in order to apply for D N R dollars, you have to have a master plan. So the master plan is only submitted once a year, which we've already passed that deadline, because we, I wanted to have a Parks Board in place, so we've missed the deadline for twenty twenty-five funding. So the plan would be, get the park board in place, get them moving on the park master plan with a committee, and the community input and support that they need. Be ready to submit to D N R in the fall of next year, get the plan of being able to apply for funds in twenty twenty-six. For park grants.
To fund.
Doesn't mean we can't do other parks projects through other funding, but for D N R grants, we're, we're still looking.
Is that the big, is that the big grant entity for parks is D N R?
Right. Every, every federal funding grant is also gonna require a master plan.
So you're doing basically all your preliminary work, kind of an idea, concept, and apply for the funding, then it becomes reality in that, hopefully twenty twenty-six, I guess, is.
Right. Unless we run into some large donor that just wants to give us millions of dollars to install a park plan, or park board improvements. Which there's other funding, like the redevelopment commission could cut money into for parks and old life and the reduced space, but it doesn't really have to wait until twenty twenty-six. It's just that's where a lot of the grant funding, um, tends to reach.
Any other questions on contact design? Any motions at all? Comments or concerns?
Well, I'm glad they're gonna get some sort of guidance. I have frustration when we have elected officials and stuff and they don't know anything, so.
I know it's, it's a salty price, but I feel like it's, it will be worth it.
Any motions on the table?
Either we could get some of this information sent to us too. Now, we're gonna have a half-day park board retreat.
It's at the town hall.
And that's just.
You can stream right here, right?
Is that, is that open to public?
Yes.
Okay.
Julia's gonna decorate.
Halloween all over. So I, I guess my, my request is, would it be okay if I sign this agreement and entertain or have uh context that Stevens had already looked through? We've let him know that we would be in the professional service agreement, um, move forward with the, the entering into the agreement if you all. Thank you.
I kind of think it's pretty important to start off a new, new chapter in the town on the right foot, so I'd be in support of it.
I'll move to.
I'll move to authorize Carmen to enter into it.
One second.
I'll second it.
Roll call please to approve Carmen signing this agreement.
Carmen Brown? Roger Decker?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Are you gonna walk with the new Parks Board, Steven?
Am I gonna walk with?
That's what it says. We'll walk the new Parks Board.
Well, I'll walk them through the law.
Yes.
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Good idea, Carmen, thank you. H R proposal for H R consulting and assessment services.
So this has been kind of an ongoing conversation um for quite a, quite a while now. And then I've had kind of this conversation with some of the council members about the influence of a lot of different things. And a lot of it is, is related to our people and our people management. We um, have been, there was a company growing on board to help us update our employee handbook. There were some things that she was adamant that she would not change on there, but the town council, as I've had with most of you, um, have discussed. And you guys gave us the consent of municipalities did this, or do this, um, regarding uh, town time. That's, that's, that's the main thing. She refused to change it. Um, we will get us the document of this. Um, unfortunately, we still have to be paid because of the political issues. So we still have this outstanding employee, outstanding in the sense that it's really good, but um, a to-do um of getting our employee handbook updated. I reached out to a couple other towns and municipalities who have kind of, have tried the internal um H R as well as looking for consultants to help them with this. That kind of provides um, the down and dirty, what we need. Kind of my, my takeaway to my team and council members is one employee handbook. Um, that's our go-to on how we onboard, how we offboard our employees. Um, those have been some of the concerns that we've even gotten from our insurance companies. How are we onboarding and offboarding our employees? Um, and so that was kind of the, the, the main conversations we've had here in vigor. It is the only proposal that I've received. I haven't really dug into anyone else. Um, but one of the things that they are looking to is to, one, help us get this employee handbook finished up. Um, and um, also talking about what kind of coaching and assessment services that are nearby to us. Uh, going back to performance evaluations, I'm sure they have a template, um, that we could use. Um, the other thing is just kind of helping us audit how we're doing at the level, and how we're managing compliance with applicable work. Um, whether we are on time or typical, um, conversations that we're having, what's our compliance, what are our performance evaluation? And how do we, again, onboard and offboard? So there's compensation structures, there's all kinds of things in this. There is one side that is a flat fee of the things that they do. And then there are some kind of hourly things that we could use them to, on demand. Um, H R secure, performance management, employee relations, talent management, and compensation. Kind of as a follow-up to what we were just talking about with the power and the, the, are we in, um, with, with, with people and people? So my question is, I would at least like to, with the project of having another company, I'm sure by this kind of, kind of, sort of connections. Again, in this case, when we got a rate increase on our liability and uh, commercial, commercial and our, just general liability on the town. That was an area of um, that we got noted on, that we needed to do better um with our employee management and onboarding and offboarding. So that's a better future plan, so. I bet you're willing to leave that side and then, but leave it open as, what is the, the hourly kind of look at? Let's start with just the, the proposal for getting.
Carmen, going back to the very start of your presentation, so we paid that other company to provide a PDF. That we don't have access to the PDF file, why is that?
We have the PDF, but we can't, we can manipulate it. We can convert it to a Word document, but.
Okay, so we have the electronic document that potentially could be used in conjunction with this as a template. So we maybe have some of the, the rough edges already accomplished that they could take and run with it and complete it? Okay, that was my question.
If we agree that there are some things in there that she would use to change. Um, but I asked that specific question to this company, if these are F L S As, like things that we need to be worried about. And he said absolutely not. And then when I mentioned that we had hired somebody, he knew exactly who it was. So it's good.
When I look at this paperwork, I see all these names and I think back to Reedy. Have, has three or four hands in on one project.
Well, if we have a flat fee, I mean.
Yeah, but that's not what this is. It's an hourly rate.
The, the one side.
The one side's flat, what you're circling.
Right, but that's not just what we're gonna need.
I mean, we can keep saying high concerns, but that's kind of where we're at with, with the way we've been doing things with H R. Um, we, we tried to hire somebody to help us fix that and that kind of stuff. Um, so I, I feel like it, it, you do need, you need somebody that knows that they're doing it themselves. Um, and unfortunately, none of us have the skills that, well, some of us have the skills, but we have other needs that we're working on. So just kind of to try to take away the, the motions of these are the people we work with every day. We don't have like a tissue box and, you know, come in here and, and we need, like, we don't have that kind of H R, but we don't even have all the docs in a row when it comes to our files, so.
Is this gonna be employee-based too, that the employees, if they have a problem, that they can go to?
No.
Didn't know.
No, very, a lot of towns don't have an H R department. Just because it's so expensive.
Now, the employee handbook talks about how you need to kind of.
Right, and that's pretty much how they run their guidelines.
Now, we have E O P through our health insurance, that if somebody has an issue, that they need to talk to somebody. But if it's an issue with their supervisor, it is spelled out in the employee handbook. How one, uh, or an employee to employee issue, how those need to be resolved.
So on the assessment part, page two, proposal. So who is our key H R personnel? Cause they're gonna offer a three-hour meeting, so who, who is that? Because they're gonna offer a three-hour meeting, so who, who is that person, present day?
Because of right now, the clerk treasurer's office has handled all that paperwork.
Yeah, and that's where all the paperwork...
It's probably Carmen, Slimmy, Chief, and...
So that would encompass all the, I guess, the supervisor leader concept? It's not gonna be specific, just one person?
You gotta be careful, because you can't, you can't just let files go anywhere they wanna go. They can't.
Forget that. But how we onboard and how we offboard, that is my main concern.
Right.
Is, and again, we talked about documentation and paperwork and insurance. And then the other thing has been, again, it was a direct, not, not a directive, but if you'd like for your insurance premiums to be reduced, here's, here, we got a checklist, a whole sheet of paper that told us of the things that we need to do better at, and this was one of them. So it's kind of to check that.
So I'm like, I'm like saying, if, if it's agreed that you can have a file and Slim can have a file, and Rick has his own files.
Right. Oh, no, no, no.
But Angie can't, you can't give your file to Angie and say, here, check her file and see if she's... I'm talking about personal files that are supposed to stay in that cabinet.
In the safe.
Locked, yeah.
I know, I think those files, like, if they're employee information, would stay in the locked vault.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, those files.
Right. I'm saying, like... I just think we need to do a better job of our documentation, is, is the main thing, without going into detail. When we're given, you know, we're getting, we're having to pay a higher premium, a higher deductible because of situations we've encountered as a town, and it's all on our HR practices. So I think that's one thing, is to, to check us, see where we're at, how do we need to get better? Because we have a lot of improvements when it comes to that, I believe, as well as, like I said, that we have that project of the employee handbook, and a couple of council members have brought that up throughout the year of where, what's the status of that. And I don't feel comfortable adopting what was provided to us. I, I think it needs some scrubbing through, and especially when it came to the, the time that we've all talked, well, we've talked to, I think it was before, Tim and Deborah on council, but Deb's aware of it, but I know we've, we've talked about it as well, how we do it versus what to refuse to take. I think we talked to Steven about it.
Carmen, I think it's a, it's a good idea. It's a good starting point. The only thing that I would add is, probably need to establish, like, a not-to-exceed number. It's not, like, indefinite, and then by the time you turn it around, you're fifty thousand dollars in or something.
So would it be something that you may feel a little bit better with if we start with the, the thirty-eight-hundred-dollar one? Let's, the initial review discovery, assessment of where we're at, kind of that reporting, and then providing those, providing you all what...
Maybe finding the fact of improvements, areas of improvement and concerns, and then they put a price tag to that for additional help. I mean...
Are we ever going to have employees, have HR to report, to bring problems to? I mean, if we got an HR department, or we hire an HR, then the employees should be able to use that, in my opinion. If we're gonna hire one part-time, if there is a problem with administration, and they can't feel that they can't go to either one of you, then they should have someone to go to, whether it be someone on the board or whether it be HR. I would feel more comfortable if we're gonna put an HR in place that they have a, that employees have a place to go to after they've followed all the chain of commands. And then, okay, now, my next step... Right.
If, if they attempted to go through the proper channels, and they don't feel like they've been heard or whatever it is, it is becoming... It's not to go to you directly.
Right, correct. It's come to council meeting. I, I agree with that, but HR is more of a private thing for them, that they can come in. Because whatever they come to that door, it's in a public meeting. If they come to our council meeting and say, hey, I've got a problem with this, they're bringing it out for everybody to know. If they bring it to an HR department that is kept secret, and then HR can make the determination if it needed to go any farther, or no, this is how it needs to be created, and this is how it needs to be taken care of. I just think that, you know, if we're gonna have an HR, and this is just me, if we're gonna pay for HR, we need to let the employees benefit from it, too, not just management.
I feel like the employees would, I'm not arguing with that.
Oh, I agree.
I feel that, I feel like if we can improve our processes and the way that we do things, being more transparent and being more, you know, setting clear expectations. That's been my biggest thing, is, you know, there's, there's opportunities that I have to, to set expectations, to fix, to do a better job. But back to the black and white, you know, where we as a town, we need to do way better. Again, back to, you know, we have a deductible that's ten grand because of situations we've had, that we need to get, we need to look at the black and white first. Not saying feelings don't matter, and that, that somebody has an issue, that they need somebody to go to, but we need to make sure that our processes are in place, so that when we do have a situation, we're following the proper group.
I agree, but that's why I say, I just think that if, just my opinion, that the employees, if it goes through all the proper chains and they can't get what they need to resolve, then they should have an opportunity to talk to HR about it, because maybe they're way out of line. Maybe they don't understand that, no, this is how it goes. And HR is strictly HR, so they know everything and all the logistics of it, and all legal terms of it. So they might be able to say, no, what your supervisor did was correct. You need to just deal with it. This is straight up how it goes. That's my only concern, is just having HR, or if we're gonna have it, is have it for the workers, too.
I'm kind of of two minds, Rob. I do think that having the process, the QD, that's not... It absolutely has to be, and it has to be more than a process and name only, which I think is something that many municipalities suffer from. I've been on the council for a good minute, and there's been some, some times where you had elected officials, appointed officials, councilmen, anybody, everybody were way out of their lanes, and there were employees that suffered unduly because of that. So because of that, I do think that having there be a cutout of some sort, where if, say, it's a council person that's in, demanding that employees be fined, that rather than going to the council that that person sits on, especially since that would be a violation of our ordinance for a council member to do that, I do think it would be helpful to, to look into having some sort of cutout, kind of along the lines of what Tim was suggesting.
And, and they do offer coaching, but to kind of look at that and the cost. And it's, it could be coaching in a sense of professional development for the supervisors as well as... I'll ask if there's specific, and I did bring that up, but that wasn't the, the focus of our, our conversation.
And I agree with you a hundred percent. Like I say, I have no doubt, you guys do great job. My point is, is just trying to make sure that the employees have some place at the very end to go to, in case they give them that, and then they can interact with it. But other than that, I appreciate it. I really do.
You know, starting, starting with this, like you said, the black and white, to get a foundation, and they're probably gonna, more than likely stumble on some things that we lack, and make recommendations that, such as this, maybe this topic, that we don't currently have, along with a lot of others, that's gonna benefit everyone as a whole, so you have to start somewhere. Do we need a motion to allow Carmen to engage in this, or...
Well, what's the motion for? To seek out someone other than these people? Or, or you wanna go with these people?
It's up to you guys. I mean, that's, like I said, this is the only one I, I contacted, because that is locally, this is how I use them. And I was just looking for something that was more of a external, where we're not having to hire somebody that works for, you know, one of us, that, you know, it just, it would be kind of an external, kind of...
Who's the other municipality that you, that uses this?
Bargerville.
Oh, Bargerville does?
They recently, they had an HR director, and they left, and they decided to build this out.
And how long have they been using life with this?
Your part-time person?
Oh, within twelve...
We had a full-time HR person.
And you have a part-time person.
Now we've got a part-time person, and he is, if we do have, have a, if we do have a concern as an employee, we're allowed to go to them and ask concerns.
If it works for Invigorate.
Correct, and he actually can, right, we can go to him with a problem. I was having problems with the insurance, with my insurance, doing something, and I went to him, and he helped me out. We got it fixed, and that was a good thing. So, I mean, the point is, is I think it can be beneficiary on both sides. If, you know, if he does help with, like, our guy helped us with our insurance, so it was kind of nice to have that guy to go to to ask questions. So that's something we could think about here, too, that would help your employees, would take a little bit of relief off of you guys trying to explain the insurance.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not picking on, I'm not picking on a list, but what I'm saying is, we have things that come up throughout the year that we don't do every day.
Correct.
And so if somebody goes on F M L A, or somebody goes on any, or whether that be military or whatever, just to kind of help navigate those types of situations where we're not fumbling. Cobra, I'll use myself as an example. When I left, I had asked, what are my Cobra rights? I don't have any.
We didn't have it, we didn't have any. No one ever told me we had, needed it, and then we, we found out we did.
One of those things that...
Would have been caught.
In my previous experience, we were, I should have Cobra options, and they were not presented to me, so it's, that, I mean, I'll just use that as a... How we can get that, so.
I agree, I agree. I'd just like to see it be engaged into the employees, too. That's the only thing I would like to see.
I don't know that we need somebody. We, you guys have over a hundred employees. We have, let's just say, thirty full-time, then another thirty part-time firefighters, and so we have to kind of look at that.
I agree.
Hey, Carmen, do...
I think you'll figure it out real well.
HR does this in Greenwood, too, similar to this. I didn't know if you were aware of that, or...
Tilsin.
Okay.
Tilsin.
Hey, I'm just throwing that out there.
No, thank you.
No, just...
Oh, okay.
He just does.
Oh, okay, I understand, I understand. See, I think Greenwood has its own in-house HR department.
Yeah, I've consulted a lot with, we've asked, have been, well, just kind of...
And you know how big Franklin is. They don't have one.
They have, they do now.
They do now?
Yeah, most towns are going to it, just to stay...
County's even talking about it.
Whoa. Dang, where are they getting the funds? Oh, that's right, our bridge money.
Old money.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion for her to proceed with this?
I would, oh, sorry, go ahead, Tim.
Go ahead.
I'm making a motion for Carmen proceed with this, in the intent that, once we get this set up, that it will benefit what the employees do, to look into that.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Radko Decker? Deborah Hendrickson?
I just have never heard of them. Of course, I don't get around a lot, but, okay.
Jess Taylor?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Ask five to zero.
Thanks, Carmen.
This one's gonna be an easy one, I hope.
Are you generators?
I'll stick up with the generators. So Slim, we were asked by the tornado, the long-term recovery team, the budget as the dollars were raised post-tornado, and they put into a fund, a community fund, and we were asked, after they met all the needs of the residents that had requested some assistance, they had asked us if we had anything in mind to kind of utilize some of the dollars that were raised post-tornado. So we had been kind of tossing around a couple of different things. The biggest thing that the town experienced during the tornado was obviously the loss of power, all of it. But what really was a scramble was getting our lift stations and getting our, our water towers back up and functioning. Thankfully, we, we had a good relationship with Dean, and they were able to bring out generators, donate them, rotate them around as they needed. But as we were kind of looking at, how could we utilize some dollars, and what's something that we just don't have a lot of money sitting around to do with, is a generator, a mobile generator. And so we actually, we had put together, we had a quote at one point, we had like nine-hundred-thousand dollars for, if we could put a permanent generator here at town hall, and then there were a couple of permanent generators. But if we also had like kind of a mobile generator that we could take around and kind of make sure lift stations were empty and things like that. So we presented them with a full meal deal, and obviously, there wasn't that much money in the long-term recovery fund. But they did, but they did decide at their meeting back in October to donate to the town two-hundred-and-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty. So with that being said, in order for us to make that purchase, we need your approval. We've received the check. They've given us a check. It's been deposited, asking for approval for the two-hundred-and-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty to purchase the generator, of which you should have had like the, on the high level, what it includes. The one thing it doesn't include, or the things it doesn't include, are the switches that we'd like to have installed on all of the lift station, water towers, et cetera, et cetera, of which I'm going to be asking the redevelopment commission money for that. So that's another hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to get the switches.
Is that the quick connect?
Yeah, to go quick.
It's a, it's a transfer switch, so it disconnects you from the power grid and then turns you on to the generator, so that you can't backfeed the power grid and fry it.
Where did we deposit this check?
Slim can make a big dead man's card. A big dead man's card.
We got it from her. I don't have that, sorry.
It was in a utility, right?
Huh?
It was in a utility.
It was in the cell tower.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure it wasn't general fund, so we don't have to do an additional appropriation.
Right, so that's where we've been putting all of the, the expenses and revenues that we're receiving back from insurance companies and that's for the cell towers. So that's where I had the revenue, put that money into, and then, so I'm just asking for permission to use those dollars that were donated.
I agree with this, because we've got the same thing where we're at, and we actually got plugs that you pull in and twist and lock it down. That way, our transportation can work, and we got a portable, three portable generators, and it really saved when the power went over there, too. I mean, it was a nice thing.
It's a silent generator, so it comes on the trailer, like boxed in, where if you have to leave it somewhere overnight, you can kind of hear it running.
It's got, is it a Cummins one?
I, I think so.
We got them, too, where you can lock the doors and stuff, and it keeps them all safe and everything's contained.
That's diesel.
Yeah.
I make a motion to spend the money.
I, I second it.
Debbie and Tim, vote, please. Thanks for looking into this.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Radko Decker?
The switches that are received. There will be cabinets installed at each lift station, where it's pretty much you that plug the cords in. I don't want people going in, like, you know, if you work on a sewer at time, or lift station at time, it's one thing, but when you, you do it all the time, they're gonna, they turn the power off. Disconnect these wires, switch them around, play it on, and that's where the concern is. All that equipment that I got, I got the cabinets on each lift station, water tower, all set up.
I'm, I'm a big fan of transfer switch on that.
Actually, with...
Yes.
Thanks, Slim. So can we restart the vote, please? I'm sorry.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Radko Decker?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Jess Taylor?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Ask four to zero, or five to zero, sorry.
Your reports, Carmen.
I promise to not take a bunch of time, but I want to give you guys, okay, so we have appointments every year. I promised to not take a bunch of time, but I wanna give you guys, okay, so we have appointments every year, uh, board appointments, commission appointments. Um, so in your packets was, um, a list of who's all up for either appointment or reappointment.
Let's see.
Um, with that being said, if it says executive, that's the town's current president, uh, who needs to, uh, legislative, his people. Last year, what we did is we opened it up for the public to, um, if they wanted to apply. So this year, we have the B G A, we have a position open, economic development commission, stormwater board, and our redevelopment commissioner is appointed annually. Um, I've contacted everybody that is currently in those positions, they've all asked, or they've all said that they would like to continue in those positions, but it's your guys' call if you want us to open it up, advertise, um, for those appointments and go through and. Joe called, you know, some of the folks and, um, did interviews with them and just kind of had conversations with them, so.
I think there were some, there were some vacancies.
There were some vacancies, especially when we got off the commission last year, but.
Yeah.
Um, so, just wanted to know how to proceed.
But everybody, everybody on this thing is, is willing to serve again?
Yes.
So we don't have?
Yes, Mike's here for stormwater boards, Eric was here, he probably got like kind of leaving, you know, just, yeah. Um, and like I said, David Collins, um, he's on economic development commission, honestly, they need ones a year now. Um, we needed that, that board for, um, the patch bonds, and the redevelopment commission, they've all done a, done a good job. Um, so it's up to you guys on how you wanna proceed.
Just a clarification on the redevelopment commission, I believe Brian Webb is probably a legislative appointment, not an executive, cause it's three executive and two legislative, but I suspect probably.
I think Dave Hawkins is legislative.
Cause I believe I appointed Brian Webb, if I remember right, to one of the vacancies.
It is Dave Hawkins, my bad, so. I think I had him out of power for order, and then when I flipped him around, I didn't change that.
I don't have any issue with, if they're willing to serve and continue, they're doing a good job.
The executive ones are done, what about you all as the council, what do you want to?
I'll, I'll move to a real point, the current, the current city members that are.
Have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Real call please.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Radko Decker?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Joe Taylor?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
All right, um, I wanted to update you, so nobody asked, except for a couple members on the stormwater board, but, uh, we can tell the community project project has not happened, um, this year, so just wanted to kind of give you a, an update. Uh, Slim and I had a, come to visit, and we kept asking them, I've been asking them since August, um, when is this going to start, September, when is this going to start? Um, they picked us down the road, it's coming down the road with Whiteland, um, so we met with them two weeks ago and basically said, we're at the point where we're not gonna let's do this project. What are you gonna do? How are you gonna make sure this project happens? So, they will be giving a notice to proceed, um, as soon as they can for next year, it's supposed to be first on the docket. Um, they do have, we're still within the contract of what we're allowed, we don't have to worry about a check with FinDog, we're good there, um, as far as giving the project, um, having it delayed, and we can still apply for other projects. Um, it doesn't, doesn't hurt that, um, but just so you know, we have, um, expressed our concerns that, that we kind of got put on the back burner, and, um, we will, I mean, basically kind of, other work, we'll make it.
Did we have a, an, um, start date in the contract?
Uh, well, they had, the notice to proceed was a very, uh, informal process. We had a, a pre-con in July and they were to start in September, at the end of, or not September, July, July twenty ninth, they were to start. Um, but as far as a formal written to pers- notice to proceed, they did not give that. So, there were some things on our end that we just kind of, we've always treated like the pre-con is kind of the kickoff to, to that, but doing your written formal, you know, we've not had to use that part of our contract before, but now we know is that we need to provide that written notice to proceed, because you can't trust any of them, um, to do the job. Um, that we hope they do without any issues, um, but it is what it is, and, um, like, so if the residents have it all, um, like, I've only gotten questions from the stormwater board, so, and none of you have asked about it either, so, um, just so you know, we're, it's not something that we just kind of, that we're allowed to do every, but.
Is this a legitimate, um, excuse to not choose them for responsive?
It could be.
Okay.
Sponsor, responsible.
Yep.
Yeah.
So, just wanted to give you that update, but some good news. Um, so either long this, either the, the primary that applied for this grant, um, through the N P O that we want to, you know, or, uh, Centerline, Sawmill, and Whiteland Road Roundabout. And, um, the, the N P O staff, they picked one of, pick our project as one of the projects that came by funds, it's a better kind of subsidy. Um, but, so that's huge, cause it's a partnership with two light lines, um, the county and us to put in the roundabout, at Sawmill, Centerline Road, and Whiteland Road. Um, the, the caveat is, is that with the N P O, it's federal funds, we're looking at fiscal year twenty eighth, um, to actually have the construction of the, the roundabout. Uh, but we will get started once that's ratified and adopted by the N P O as the, the funded project. Um, we'll be coming and kind of getting started, at least on design and N P O, um, with that project, so, that's some good news.
So new Whiteland and the county are both on board?
Yes, yes, so they all had to provide letters of support, we submitted that in September, and, um, like I said, just found out about that last Monday, um, and they'll be ratified by their, their board, um, this week.
Might be too old to drive, my man.
So, and then the last thing is the number S B A, S B O A, um, accident or date form.
Yep.
I have, I.
Uh, thank you, we already talked about this, but, uh, we hired three new employees for the public work, uh, Matt, Dakota, and Bradley. Um, Steve's still here, uh, congratulations to Steve, he, uh, passed through some water tests, we.
Congratulations, Charlie.
Interstate lift station, just a quick update, they do have a wet well in, and they are waiting on, uh, the lids. Uh, if you start putting rails in, but they, there's a few other parts that they're kind of waiting on. They will probably be, uh, also putting in the, uh, control.
For trash can?
Lift station. Uh, the police have decided, uh, we're gonna get rid of two vehicles. Uh, if you guys are okay with it, it was in my budget, um, this year, to purchase a new vehicle, but I can take that money and purchase the two vehicles that they're getting rid of. Uh, there are two pickups at, uh, twenty-five thousand.
A pickup? Oh, twenty-five for two? That's a good deal.
If you all pick up a new one.
There's an arm wrestling, triathlon. We need to authorize. That, the motion.
That is a, a recent ordinance, and I don't remember exactly what it says, but probably the simple thing is.
Signify by saying.
If you're okay with it, just a motion to approve it would be good.
I'll move to authorize director of operations to, uh, purchase those vehicles from the police.
Yes, second.
Who, oh, I thought you said second, I'll second.
A real call please on that.
Tim Brown?
Yes.
Radko Decker?
Yes.
Deborah Hendrickson?
Yes.
Joe Taylor?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Ask five to zero.
Any updates on the, the barns, the, all that stuff, you can share with us, please?
Engineer is still arguing with engineer, or trying to argue with the, I think, still back to the, uh, if they can be allowed on inspection, if they can be allowed, and we'll test them, start building the building. So that's kind of a, they didn't kind of, that was, um, along with it. I guess it's, it's the whole page of this stuff.
When do you think they're gonna have resolution to that issue?
That's kind of what I just sent a kind of a nasty grim the other day, and it was like, hey, we need to figure this out, cause really like to start building the building like sometime yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
They're still kind of figuring their spots out, I guess, so.
I hate insurance.
Are we at the mercy of the insurance then, since pretty much they're covering the replacement?
Pretty much since they're paying for it, it's what they say kind of gets it, so.
How do we poke that bear?
Uh, I have, it's great fun, um, but I'm not the only one that's kind of going through this. Um, there is another guy that works with our engineer that is kind of going through the same thing, so, that two, I guess, are gonna come to, they can come up with it. Them in that building. But I, I know that one.
Keep escalating, I guess.
I've got just a couple of things. One, I was asked about the alley again, does this mean we're not paving it this year?
I actually took them out there, um, and showed it to them, and it was kind of like.
He didn't call anybody else, just we were sticking with Dave. For that, for that alley, it was in the bid?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, I did, I thought you said they wasn't interested in doing it, but they're just not interested in doing any paving for us this year.
I think it's the small amount that it would be, they just don't want to load the equipment up and, you know, get it all down here to do the paperwork.
Right, okay, well, I'll let them know then, because they asked me, and then I asked you, and we was gonna get it paved this year, now we're not, so I'm gonna let them know. Another question I had for you, I got a, a gentleman stopped by my house and asked me about that shed at our entrance that's over that water protected, the back of it's blowing out, it's uncrooked, i- i- he says, in his words, "It's not acceptable going into our addition looking like that," and.
Going away.
Okay, I'll let him know, cause he left me his number to call him, and.
People hired, so that we wasn't stretched so thin, but it's on the way.
Okay, well, he just mentioned that it, it was starting to fall apart, you know, and them sheds are, they're designed not to last for long, correct? And I, and I explained that to him.
But it's gonna go away.
Okay, well, he just asked me to ask that, and I told him I'd ask the supervisor, and then that way I'd get back with him tomorrow.
My plan is to probably pour a small footer there and lay a block wall, or block wall the way around, but design the roof, uh, or build the roof, uh, where we can just pick it up, set it over halfway, and then they can go in and pick the pump out or whatever you need to do.
That's what I did at our water, uh, water tires, I made it where the roof comes off, and then we can reach in with, just for the group ups, if that makes sense. I appreciate the alley, I have no, thank you.
Thanks Slim. Mister Ship? Oh, come on. Hey, did you get your new trucks? Did you get your new trucks?
We did.
See, you can share that with us.
We paid you twenty-five thousand for your time.
Uh, any council comment?
Nope, that's all I had.
Any public comment? Okay, go ahead and adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.